... meeting the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees. Order of course my board members present. This meeting's been duly called and posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. If you'll join me in the pledge of the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, I'm choking. And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Bad time to choke. Okay, are you starting us or are we just going straight to Matt?
I'd be happy to start us.
We are beginning this evening with the City of Belton Parks update. Wow, I'm really loud.
Come on up, Matt. In 2012, the school district donated...
January of 2012.
In January of 2012, the school district donated some property behind South Belton Middle School to the City of Belton to be used as a park. And so Jeff is here this evening to, excuse me, Matt, Bates is here this evening to give us an update on the park and what the plans are. So we'll let Matt take it.
Absolutely. Mr. Pendra, trustees, I appreciate you having me along tonight. Just really want to, what I want to do here is give you guys and the staff here at BISD an overview of what's happening with this parkland. So as you rightly recall, just to kind of give you all a bit of a history that Dr. Cannon kind of touched on, you guys granted us that land with the development of that middle school in January 2012. We then went out for a bond, the city did, and allocated $70,000 towards the building of that park. Money was allocated in 2013. In the spring of 15, we tried to capitalize on a Texas Parks and Wildlife grant called a Small Communities Grant, which is matching funds. Tried basically, you know, double our money up, so to speak. Very competitive grant, very competitive process, but we just missed out by a couple of points and so that was, we are back to our $70,000. And so made a plan going forward to get this done. So that's kind of the history. So you guys are familiar. Here's a little bit of a location of what we're talking about here. It's right there behind the middle school, right there off Highway 190 or Interstate 14 soon. Avenue J comes into it and that is the kind of address wise that the city would be using. Entrance would be off Avenue J. So it's 3.55 acres, okay? So want to give you guys a kind of a brief overview of what we plan to do with the park and then also what we're going forward with with City Council here shortly with the naming of the park. So what we've tried to do is squeeze the most out of that $70,000 we can. I think that maybe some pictures included, but I obviously wanted to maybe share these with you guys if you're able to pass that around. And maybe I'll pass it back to staff there in a little bit. But this is some playground equipment that we have got through Burke. It is an awesome piece of playground equipment. Give you guys in the audience there, just a little piece. It's gonna be great. The only difference you'll see on this that has changed is there's two swing bays, not three, okay? So two swing bays, not three, but a really nice piece of equipment. The, oh, sorry, it's on this one. Sorry, yeah. We'll switch you out here in a second. But that's what we've got going on. It'll be ADA wood mulch fiber accessible throughout. It's got a lot of climbing obstacles on there. It's kind of the way that kids are going nowadays is really playground equipment's tailored to that. We've also managed to squeeze out a quarter-mile loop trail, okay? It's gonna be a quarter-mile loop concrete trail that will go around the northern section of that park. You'll see it highlighted in yellow there. And that's gonna be a five-foot-wide concrete trail, kind of meander. There are some absolutely beautiful trees out there. And trust me, I'm a parks guy, we're gonna keep every single one of them. We may do some trimming to kind of make sure that they are growing healthy and growing up and out, but we want to capitalize that with the trail. So you're going outside, meandering close, fairly close to the property line. Obviously, we don't want to encroach and cause any issues there, but just right around the edge with the trees and everything like that. You'll see that the park is kind of set up for maybe a Phase II approach by bringing that trail even further down and looping it back around so that could potentially bring it all the way up to a quarter mile. There'll be two benches, two picnic tables, a barbecue grill, and trash cans there. There'll also be a nice entrance sign, one of our masonry stone entrance signs, with a storyboard of hopefully the proposed name that we're gonna go forward with. So that's what we've got. Important to note that the classification of this park has been classified as a neighborhood park, okay? So that's really to serve the residential immediately around it. You will note that there's maybe not a whole lot of parking, city parking that we have accessible there. There'll be a few maybe parallel parking spots for folks to utilize, but really focus on serving the immediate neighborhood that's right there with them for that. I want to kind of give you guys a bit of a timeline for completion. Do you have questions? Yes, sir.
Just back on that playground, what age, what is...
Yes, sir.
I know when we buy a playground...
Five to 12.
There's a difference between the early and the little older elementary playgrounds, for example.
Yes, sir.
What is this designed for?
Five to 12.
Five?
Five to 12. So we, yeah, I have been, I have been in touch with Ms. White, Principal White, I believe her name is, from the South Belton Middle School. Also, there's a, you've got an awesome teacher over there called Mr. G. And that, he's a great guy. He's got a lot of ideas, wants to work with too. But just more want to let them know kind of what I'm sharing with you guys. She's mentioned that it might be difficult for the folk, for the kids to use that because there's no restrooms out there. And evidently, whenever you try to come out of a classroom, it's inevitable that someone needs to use a restroom. And so maybe down the line, as we phase approach this, we can, you know, maybe consider things like that going forward for that. Bit of a timeline, but I guess back to the question, five to 12 would be the age. Timeline for completion, we began this process in September, going out for bids, really gathering a whole bunch of playground manufacturers. We've selected the piece of equipment that you see before you. We think that's the biggest bang for your buck that we can get and really will be nice. That's also the colors that we've selected, so really try and tie into what you guys have there at the school. It's a very modern-looking building. It's gonna have the same, very similar school colors to what the ISD has. October is our site prep, so we're actually gonna be starting there tomorrow. But we'll be kind of shredding the area, mowing it down. What we want to do is once we shred it, we want to start mowing and mowing it down so the grass starts to come up. There'll be some tree trimming, but that's only to enhance what's already there. That's not to take stuff down. There'll be some light grading where needed for the actual site and then prep for the trail. That will require moving about six inches of dirt down there. So that'll be the only thing you'll see kind of dug up, so to speak, for that concrete trail. We're hoping for a mid-November install for our playground equipment, which then we will come back on in early December after Thanksgiving for the concrete trail. So we want the playground to be in place first so that the trail can work its way to that and around it. And then we want to, obviously, we've departmental deadline is the first of January so that we do not encroach at all on the D date or anything like that. Wouldn't want to come back here and have to ask for more time. We hope to get that done. That might not be the official opening. We may try and do something a little nicer with the grand opening if, again, get into the name, so. So that brings, any questions about kind of the development of the park?
You don't expect parking to kind of overflow into the parking onto the side?
We were certainly not advocating that. We don't want to assume that your parking is our parking. Just kind of like a Chisholm Trail and Tiger Stadium scenario. We don't advertise people to go park in your parking.
But they do.
But they do. And likewise, probably when there's a football game back and forth. So it's certainly would, it's a neighborhood park at the moment. We would hope, we think it's just really gonna serve the residences right now. And if someone calls our office and asks how to get there, we'll tell them it's off Avenue J. Until a later date, we would decide with you guys to see if that was at all something that you guys were okay with. But don't want to jump that ground at all and want to respect that boundary there. So on to the street naming. So we are proposing this, the name for this park. It is a new park site. So we've gone through kind of a different, different namings. We formed a Parks Naming Committee, then took that to Parks Board, and ultimately we'll go to City Council. And would certainly love your feedback on the proposed name, whether you guys would concur and I'll happy to share that with council or not, whatever it would be. But we are, want to name this Jeff Hamilton Neighborhood Park, okay? You may have heard that name. We've heard, Genevieve Gregg is the...
I might just mention to you, Ms. Gregg has come to us and requested us to name something after Jeff Hamilton also. So this is great. From my view, this is kind of where I was starting to...
We had heard that, we had heard that and we felt like the proximity to the school for education.
Right.
And then also, it's gonna be right up there at the interstate. Yeah, I think it'll be just a real neat little site, a great way to honor the legacy of Jeff Hamilton. So Genevieve Gregg, I'm gonna move through that, but yeah, she's, she came and spoke just like she has and we thought this was really an opportune time to capitalize on wanting to name something after Jeff Hamilton. So I'll kind of give you a brief overview. I don't want to take too much of your time, but you know, Jeff Hamilton was born a slave and then ultimately became a bodyguard of, so almost like a child to Sam Houston throughout his time. I'm really abbreviating this, so if you guys want to read the presentation, you're welcome to. He did grow up with Sam Houston's children, so he was well-educated. He was learning all about religion, responsibility, everything like that. And then ultimately went with Hamilton as an office boy when he became the governor of the great state of Texas. When Houston, when Houston freed the slaves in October, Hamilton reminded, he wanted to remain with the family. It was a completely different relationship between Jeff Hamilton and Houston, won very much of respect and loyalty. And he remained that way, remained revered, Hamilton, all the way to his death. More importantly, Jeff Hamilton came to Belton as part of the Mary Harden-Baylor College when that started. He was hugely important with educating there, just a real big advocate for that. Really very big in Belton. I know very much that there's a park in Temple named Jeff Hamilton Park. And for me, that's just all the more credit that this fine person deserves. But we liked, we like him, we like to think of him as a Belton guy. He is buried in East Belton, has a marker stone there as well as a historic marker, as he does at U M H B, too. So that's, and there's a picture there of his gravesite. And you can see right behind it that historical marker, too, out there at East Belton. So that's kind of an overview, guys. Really appreciate your time. Let me come along here, first on the agenda, too. That was nice of you guys. But just to really give you an overview of what we have, I think you'll really like it. I know it's been a little while, but I think that what, you'll be happy with the product. And when we do come to grand opening, things like that, the first call will be to the school district to make sure you guys are there and get to see it, see it through.
Yeah, well, thank you. Certainly, we've been real interested in this and wondering if we were gonna get a park within the five years. Looks like four years and 11 months, it's gonna happen.
Right in time.
So that's, that's great. It's good to see it finally happening and will be great for that area.
Yes, sir.
One of the, one of the things that I think we all took a lot of pride in is the partnership between the, the school district, Belton School District and the City of Belton in developing that area with the placement of South Belton Middle School and the Avenue D road expansion in that park area was all part of developing that area of town and investing in there. So I'm thankful to see that continuing out the plan that we set in motion several years ago. I, we don't have this to vote on or do anything like that, but I would just, from a personal standpoint, I'm very glad to hear that Jeff Hamilton's gonna recommend it to be honored this way. I think that's a great way of adding his name to something else that's for children, significant for a community. So I'm really glad to see that. Appreciate whoever Parks Committee or Naming Committee, as you say...
Parks Naming Committee, Parks Board, just all these different types of boards that we would like to go through, but no, definitely.
Bale 70, thoughts?
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Well, we look forward to it.
Definitely appreciate it.
We will be interested to see how the parking goes. Obviously, that's gonna be an issue. I think we want to be community-minded and all that, but if we come in Monday morning and the parking lot's trashed from the park, that would be a problem.
No, yeah, absolutely.
We'll have to keep an eye on it.
Yeah, no, we definitely will and certainly will.
Appreciate you working on that.
Thank you, Randy.
And glad to see development, continued development of the Belton Parks. Great. Okay, next item on our agenda, we're gonna hear a report from the Tasby Delegate Assembly and our representative, Sue Jordan, and alternate Mike Cowan.
And the crowd roars.
So tell us what you learned and what you saw and what we need to know.
Well, you realize I've slept since then. However, making sure that I, this will be a refresher for some and new for others. I thought that what would be good would be talking about the process itself because being at Greenhorn and having entered into this process at Newby, it would, the process itself was interesting for me. So I thought that I would share kind of an overview about the process. So I don't know if you all know what the Tasby Delegate Assembly does, but I will tell you that this is something that's, an assembly that's held just annually. There were, for this year's meeting, there were over 700 folks in attendance and the quorum was met at 210. You know, it's very much a very efficient meeting, pretty much like what we do here. Things are voted on and there's a process for that. The three main purposes of the Delegate Assembly, again, refresher for some, new for others, is for those going forward who would like to attend next year. So the first thing they do is they adopt the Tasby Advocacy Agenda, and that's for issues that are critical to public education. And then, of course, they elect the Tasby Leadership Board. Now, I thought that was interesting. Lots of interesting dynamics going from the floor. There were some folks that were already a shoo-in and some that were challenged from the floor and the presentations that they gave and the reasons why they should be elected versus their counterparts, that in itself was quite interesting. I will tell you that the Tasby Board is made up of 44 directors and six offices and they represent over 20 geographical areas, just in case you all didn't know that. Now, for this particular meeting, they had a keynote speaker. His name was Thomas Ratliff and he is, yes, he was a good one. He's currently, he is in office until December and he is the Vice Chair of the State Board of Education. He shared with us lots of good data and I will share something here in a second that anyone can go and take a look at this for themselves, but he shared with us, he talked about charter schools and vouchers and the fact that he's not pro-vouchers. He talked to us about ISDs faring better than charter schools. And you can see the TEA website for the 2015 results. But he talked about dropout rates and he said that ISDs only have a 1.5% dropout rate versus charters who have a 5.5%. And then, of course, ISDs score hires on SAT and ACTs. So I thought that was kind of cool. His website, like, it's just Dropbox.com and you can put in his email and I'll share that with you. It's Thomas@ThomasRatliff.com and the password is poke the bear. And in that particular area, and you can check, there's tons of data and demographics that would be very interesting for those of you who are interested in that.
Sue, can I just add?
Sure.
He, in addition to his, his speech at the Delegate Assembly, which is on video and in, you can also do that, I think I tweeted the link to that. He spoke to testify today to the House Public Education Committee and used the same information plus some more. He added some new information. I got an opportunity to visit with him last Friday evening at a dinner and he said, "I've got a few new things for him, some new data." So he added a few more slides, a few more charts, and all of that is on his, in his Dropbox and it's all available. I actually tweeted that out, so if you want to go check out any of that stuff, you can go find my tweet about his stuff. So Thomas Ratliff's the champion for children, so.
And he gave us his personal cell phone number and he said, "Please call him anytime you want to discuss vouchers." So anybody who wants that, I've got that as well.
Cool.
Now, now, there's nothing, you know, being at Greenhorn, the whole process was a little daunting at first, just, you know, voting with a frisbee, you know? Like, okay, do I hold it this way or that way? You know, it was a very important process, but just the process itself was one that I would like to experience again if given the opportunity, because then I'll feel like an old hat and we'll be better prepared.
Great. Any significant resolutions or anything that we need to know about?
Nothing that stuck with me per se, but again, I would point you back to Thomas's website and also some of those things are attached to this presentation.
Cool. Great. Thank you for representing us. Appreciate you doing that. Having done that many years, I know there's an extra little way you miss out on some other stuff to get to do that, but hopefully it's a great learning experience. I think Mike would, would also agree that tremendous learning experience Mike did for many years and represented us, so thank you for doing that. Well, let's segue to the convention. Mike, who's gonna go first talking about the convention feedback?
Well, Mike, ladies first. So there were a couple of really good things that I went to, but one of my favorites, my absolute favorite, we were challenged to come up with four words why we serve as school board members. Now, you try to condense that down into four words. That was a real challenge. So these were my four words. Kids, change, diversity, conversation. Then we had to take those four words and put it into a sentence to explain why I serve. Says, "I wanted to be a change agent for diversity in our district. I wanted to be a part of the conversation regarding educating and leading our kids into the future." What I would say to my colleagues here, sitting here on the podium, is that I've got some additional copies of this handy, handy little thing. I would challenge you all to just sit back and just think about why you serve. See if you can come up with four words. This was not easy. This was certainly something, and you, you know in your heart of hearts why you serve, but it's not until you really have to actually put it into content like that that it really makes you think. So I would love to share that.
Who's the presenter for that? Was that a Tasby somebody or was it a...
This was, hold on, I'm glad you asked that question.
Somebody that we might want to have...
Yeah, it was Tasby, but I'll have to get you the exact...
Okay, I'm just curious because...
But it was governance from the heart.
Okay. That might be, you know, we're always looking for what we do for team building. Of course, I think we're set up for CTE for the next three years.
Yes, yes, yes.
But good.
And the only other thing that I want to share very quickly about this, and Angela, you can attest to this, too. The convention was interest, it was in an interesting venue. I actually averaged about 13,000 steps a day. I'm healthier than I've ever been, just FYI.
Houston Convention Center.
And I became a sheeple because I had to follow the people to figure out where I was going some of the time, just to get out of the building. Very interesting. I yield the floor to Mr. Mike. Thank you.
The, like Sue, the most important thing that I realized was that that convention center is long and I got lost several times, too. So, but a couple of...
Good news is it'll be back in Dallas next year.
Yes, which is also a little closer, which is nice. But I attended a couple of sessions that are relevant to things we have going on or could have going on. One was on cameras in special ed classrooms and the presentation was by Lake Travis School District and their General Counsel, who I thought did a, a nice job. But they touched on a lot of things we already know. Classroom definition isn't really clear in that, in that law. There are a lot of vague issues and areas in the law, so they touched on some of those. The definition of classroom being one. They did talk a little bit about the difference between the TEA's recommendations, I guess, and the Attorney General's opinion, which is non-binding. And Lake Travis, by the way, in terms of having, when there is a request for cameras in a classroom, they don't view the same way as the Attorney General's opinion. They just put cameras in the classroom that was requested, so, and that seemed to be...
The intent of the legislation, in fact.
Right, exactly. It seemed to be.
There'll be some clarification this session.
But anyway, that's one thing that I got out of that. They, they emphasized the importance of good processes, especially in advance, to have forms for, you know, to be completed for incidents that may occur in a classroom. Forms for taking a request for cameras in the classroom, so being very organized. They actually have a process flow chart that Lake Travis had developed that they said were welcome to, to access. And that was pretty much what I got out of that session. I had some other notes and I'll just give these to Connie, but those were the most important things that came out of that, that session. I went to a U I L update that Susan had mentioned an interest in, so I went to that. And there was some talk about initially football being safer than it's ever been. The U I L has a concern about kids specializing in one sport.
We were just talking about that, yeah.
Which, you know, seems to be the direction things have been heading for several years now, but you don't see many multi-sport athletes and they talked a little bit about that. There's a huge shortage of officiating or officials for football and other sports. Health and safety is a big issue in all sports and he specifically mentioned in band and mentioned that they, there may be something coming, some direction regarding banned practice restrictions and medical releases and other things because the band starts practicing, I guess, at most school districts, including hours in August. And they, they practice pretty extensive hours in August. So anyway, I don't know that there's an issue there or not, but they said there will be some discussion about that, that sometime soon, I guess they've launched a comprehensive data collection model on concussions in partnership with UT Southwestern Medical. So there may at some point be, it may be mandatory to enter concussion data on every student incident. I don't know if we already maintain that or not, but that may be something that... There was a little bit of a discussion on reclassification, realignment. They didn't mention anything significant in 6A. They may look at splitting 5A into two different conferences like they have, I guess, in 4A and below, but anyway, that was a little bit beyond what I was able to understand there. And he mentioned that the U I L oversees 76 U I L sanctioned activities, which I found interesting. They're gonna be adding the first-ever Spirit State Championship and Robotic State Championships. Another session I went to that was of interest to us is, and Angela was in this, as well is the, and we're gonna have a discussion on it here shortly, Districts of Innovation. Let me find my notes. This was, this session was put on by El Paso ISD and I apologize, I don't remember, I'd have to look back who exactly was there, but I think it was their counsel at the time, but it was an external counsel at that time, but she's working for a different school district now. Anyway, I guess El Paso was one of the first school districts to apply for this and it's a little bit different. They, they went down this road mainly driven by the 90% rule. They, it was very important for them to get, and I'm gonna touch on some things that may not be important to us, but it was important to them to get teachers' unions on board with the process because teachers' unions there are very influential. It was important for them to have the outside counsel that they used help them with the process to add some independence credibility. And again, I don't know that that's important for us because El Paso was in a little different situation and needed that independence credibility whereas we probably wouldn't.
We need a lot more now, too.
And I made some other notes, again, not anything significant that I'll give to Connie. But one thing that I did note and highlighted was that the, the person there mentioned that there's a chance that TEA will no longer grant certain waivers that are available now through Districts of Innovation. So that could be an issue.
So you need to be a District...
Like high sides or step development waivers.
And, you know, El Paso's approaching. I guess one of the reasons they wanted to do this presentation was, in their mind, the more the merrier. The more districts that are Districts of Innovation, the better, for the short term and the long term. So anyway, that was about it there. I sat in on a construction contract session that turns out Angela was in it and our architect Jared was in that as well, so they've got all that covered.
You were stalking our board members.
Yeah, maybe I was stalking her.
Oh.
Making sure she was going to sessions. No, I'm sure it was the other way around. But it was good to see Jared in there, so not much we would pull over on him since he heard it all. But that was it. I attended other sessions, but those were really the, the things of note that I had, had highlighted. I had noted, like Sue did, Tom Ratliff's Dropbox info. Oh, the FASCO... Oh, the Fast Grow Schools Coalition, real quick. There wasn't a lot that came out of that lunch. I enjoyed going to it. The speaker was Larry Taylor, and I think that's probably why I didn't get much out of it. He is the chairman of the Senate Education Committee. Who, you know, that's fine. But unfortunately, he started his session with some comment regarding a simplified finance system now that the Supreme Court is ruling, won't be hanging over the legislature's heads. So, making their job a little bit easier.
He's also a proponent of vouchers.
Yeah. And he did make some comment about Massachusetts and the way they do school funding. They pool it, divvy it up equally. And when the head of the luncheon, I can't remember his name. I have it somewhere. When he got back up after Mr. Taylor spoke, he said he was glad to hear him mention Boston, where they get nineteen thousand dollars a student. So. Anyway, but I didn't get a whole lot out of that luncheon. It was a nice lunch.
Oh, yeah.
And time well spent with Sue and with Kyle. So, enjoyed that.
Good.
Yeah, sorry.
Should I ask, Connie, anything you want to share with us that you learned?
It's always just a great opportunity to hear what other districts are doing and find ideas that can help in the work that we're doing.
Great. Angela, you want to throw anything out? Anything to add? Well, again, thank you all for representing us. If you have notes, if you want to get those to Connie, she can then send it out to us in a report later. That'd be great. So, good stuff. All right. So, unless y'all need a break, I'm going to just trudge through. Hang on. No, not yet. We can't do the hearing until six. So, we have to wait on that. I'm going to jump, we're going to jump ahead and then come back through. So, we're going to go down to the consent agenda. There being note, we're going to be a little out of order just to be efficient with time so we can get everybody out a little bit earlier.
Let's do that.
Any board members have any? And I should have mentioned earlier, Jeff is not with us tonight. He's being a dad. And so, he took a dad, a parent pass today. Consent agenda. Does any board member have any item they'd like pulled for discussion? Okay, let me identify those items.
I'll just say, I don't think you can appoint the committee until I do the hearing. District of Innovation.
Okay. We'll pull. Okay. Okay. We'll pull that item then. We will pull item K. And if somebody will be sure to remind me to do that. Then later. Okay. The consent agenda then has the minutes of the September nineteenth, twenty sixteen, regular meeting, the unhonored financial report for the Monday ending September thirtieth, twenty sixteen, which always looks a little strange when it's the first month of the fiscal year. Looks very different than what we've had. We have the gifts grants in bequest of less than a thousand. I think on page sixty-one, we'll have that. That's for information only. We don't need any action, but we appreciate those folks. And then we have the revenues of at least a thousand, less than ten thousand. Three donations. Barry Harper donated one thousand dollars to sponsor the Belton High School Think Pink t-shirt campaign. Special thanks to Barry. This is an annual event. And if we get out of here soon enough, we can run by Sonic and the cheerleaders are out there selling shirts as we speak. Great event supporting cancer, breast cancer research with Scott and White, Baylor Scott and White Hill Plan. The High Point Elementary PTA donated three thousand six hundred dollars for the purchase of Apple TV devices. And the Lakewood PTA donated six thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars to assist with the purchase of a shade sale for the school playground. We have following expenditures over fifty thousand dollars. The equipment and services for the Cisco Unified Communications Telephone Infrastructure Upgrade. We had previously talked about this and approved this, but we, this is an additional project awarded to Presidio. Total cost for the upgrade is ninety-four thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Comes from the general fund budget. This is a budgeted expense. But E-rate funded in part. Then we have the computer lab upgrades at Belton High School, Lake Belton Middle School, and South Belton Middle School. The vendors were selected from buy board with fifty-one thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars being purchased from VIG Solutions for PC computers and seventy thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars from Apple Computer for iMac computers for a total of one hundred twenty-two thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars. Again, that's a budgeted expense. We then have the cabling and professional services from NetSync Network Solutions supporting E-rate category-two wireless upgrades, RFP one five one two nine one five one two five. Approval of the expenditure for cabling and professional services at a price of forty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty cents. We have one budget amendment, which is actually just to move money back into the fund because the projects weren't ended before the fiscal year changed. And so, we're moving funding from the fund balance back into the general fund to complete the Belton High School Library and Computer Lab renovation of one hundred sixty-one thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. The track and field, one hundred five thousand three dollars and three cents. And the CTE-covered workspace, one hundred forty thousand three hundred, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents for a total of four hundred seven thousand two hundred seventy dollars and sixty-six cents of an expenditure increase. Again, that's money that we already designated for that purpose. Then we have the acceptance and closeout of the track and field project and approval of the final payment and release the final payment of one hundred five thousand and three dollars. We have change order number one to extend the work schedule for the automotive technology building and construction technology outdoor shop. Has to extend the work schedule for the project by fifteen calendar delays due to the rerouting of an unknown fire main located on site. We have the summary of the twenty sixteen tax roll for Belton ISD. Would just, as a point of interest, note that the freeze-adjusted taxable value is approximately two point four billion with a total tax level of approximately thirty-eight and a half million. Of course, we did all that when we did our budget and tax adoptions, tax rate adoptions. But we have to approve the final tax roll. So, we'll stop there and hold K until later. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda? Motion for Ms. Winkler and a segment for Ms. Jordan. On favor of the motion, raise a hand. That passes unanimously. Okay. Now, let's move superintendent's report. Gotcha.
All right. Few items this evening to share with you. First, an update on our twenty twenty-five plan and particularly high school planning. We have established what we're calling an executive project committee, which is a small internal group that is working with O'Connell Robertson Architects to steer the process of the development of our vision and schematic design for a new comprehensive high school. We've already met with that committee one time. And then last Wednesday, we took a tour of several high school facilities to get a feel for the kinds of spaces and designs that we might want to incorporate into a new high school and to see how programs are laid out in some of those facilities. And Mr. Pittinger was able to join us for that, those tours last Wednesday. And I just wanted to say, I thought O'Connell Robertson did a really great job of selecting schools that helped us to gain some perspective on school size, philosophies of instruction and programming. We were particularly interested in looking at CTE, fine arts, athletic facilities, as well as cafeterias and common spaces such as libraries. And then we had some interesting conversations about performing arts centers. So, we got a really nice perspective on those things. I also thought that the tour gave us a sense of how much construction costs have increased since we built our newest middle schools and what that means for building a new high school. We were able to visit Lampasses High School, Tom Glenn High School in Leander, which just opened this school year with ninth and tenth graders. At Westwood High School in Round Rock, we saw renovations that had been phased in over multiple years. We saw O'Connell Robertson's Success High School in Round Rock, which is a credit recovery center of sorts. A smaller facility, but architecturally really nice. And then we looked at Eastview High School in Georgetown. And I just thought it was a really great day. It was quite invigorating. I enjoyed the time with our architects to just get to think about the design of a new high school. And I really enjoyed hearing the ideas and the thinking of others in our group as we traveled throughout the day. So, tomorrow, we're going to debrief with O'Connell Robertson and that project, executive project committee in a half-day session here at the administration building and continue to take steps to move us forward. Want to add anything to that, Mr. Pittinger?
I'd just add the variety is significant in it. It really, buildings often reflect philosophy of education. And we saw some things that we thought would fit in Belton and some things that wouldn't fit in Belton. And it was interesting to move, kind of bounce back and forth, everything from, you know, how open, how visible are the classrooms are you in? You know, it's a brick wall that you have to sneak a peek through, a little bitty window and a door maybe. Or they're wide open, kind of like what we have at our newer schools. Certainly at New Tech, Wasco, and at our newer middle schools. So, you know, a lot of variety, a lot of things to think about. There were some things that I hadn't considered before that was interesting to see. So, boy, there's so many options, so many things to consider. We did see one, I mean frankly, I walked out and said, "I'll take it, but I don't know how you afford it." Was kind of my conclusion out of that. But.
The school in Leander felt like us.
New school.
It was most closely aligned to what we've done at South Belton Middle School and at North Belton Middle School. And it just felt really good.
Yeah. So, I would just add on that, if you have any opportunities, you're traveling around, go look at schools. You know, poke in, poke around, take advantage of those opportunities. Look at gyms and performing arts centers especially. Those are the kind of things we were looking at in entrances. And we think we have a pretty good handle on what we want in classrooms. We've been doing that. But entries and, you know, how you get into school. We go to different schools for events. And so, you know, be thinking about public access. And security obviously is an issue, but public access is important.
I'd say that, you know, the culture and how that building facilitates culture among the students was really evident in several of the facilities that we went in. And in one, maybe not so much. But the facility really does enhance the culture of what the kids do.
One of the common things, I don't know, it wouldn't come to everyone, but things that we're seeing more and more is opportunities for kids to gather, gathering places. Whether it's, we talked about a hub, whether it's like our commons you think about or a library, or whatever term you use for a library these days. And everybody uses a different term for it. But they're gathering spots for people and students to gather. And it's interesting, the different variety of ways you can do that. But we're doing it at Belton High School. And certainly, we've done that at New Tech High School, Wasco also, where they can gather to, for study and for social, but for study opportunities. And I like the changes we've made to the library, for example, at Belton High School recently, is supporting that notion. But location of that commonplace is important too. Anyway, a lot to consider. We're a long way, obviously, from having a design.
We are. I'll share one comment. I talked to a group of students in Leander about what they liked about their new facility that they'd only been in a few weeks. And one of the students said, "It's just really free." And when I probed a little bit further, it's, "I'm comfortable. I'm not in a combo desk that's the old-fashioned desk in a row and walking down a hall in a line. And I'm just very comfortable in my school." So, I appreciated his word, "free." We will have an update to you, for you at the next meeting on November the fourteenth. O'Connell Robertson will be here to share some of the work that the committee's done. And so, we'll continue to push forward. Okay. Next item is the Belton Educational Enrichment Foundation Red Carpet Event. On October the sixth, the Belton Educational Enrichment Foundation hosted their annual red carpet event. This year, it was at Ten Rock Ranch. And we had one of the largest groups that the foundation has ever had attending the event. And so, it was very nice. Police, these are one of my favorite pictures. Police Chiefs Gene Ellis with the City of Belton and Floyd Mitchell with the City of Temple, along with Casey Ian. Reporter Rissa Shaw served as hosts and hostesses and emcees for the event. These two police chiefs did just a remarkable job.
They were funny. They were funny and engaging. And that was a win.
They were quite charming. They had gotten together prior to the event and they just did a fantastic job. So, that was one of my favorite parts of the evening. And then our own Harmony Choir provided entertainment for the event. Beautiful girls and did a nice job. And then also participating was Trey Gallaway. And that's not Trey, that's his son.
That's Thomas.
Of Central Texas Auction Services. And this is his son, Thomas, who is an eighth grader at North Belton Middle School. And he did part of the auctioneering for the event. And so, it was really fun to listen to him.
I can ask him a little bit later in our meeting. He's the youngest licensed auctioneer.
In the state of Texas. And he's one of our students. They did raise over fifty thousand dollars for scholarships and teacher grants. I don't have an exact total on that. But I spoke with Robert Jones today. He said they did raise over fifty thousand. And he wanted for me to also mention to you all that they were very proud of having wrapped up a very successful employee campaign in the district, which raised twenty-three thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars. And they had over five hundred of our employees who participated, which was a very high number for them. And so, they were pleased. Great event. Enrollment update. Our official snapshot date is fast approaching. That's October twenty-eighth. That's the last Friday in October. As of last week, there were eleven thousand one hundred six students enrolled in Belton ISD. And we do plan to have our demographic first. So, next month's meeting is going to be a little bit longer than this month. But we do have, plan to have Bob Templeton here next month to give you a report on that, our most current demographic data and how that's shaking out for snapshot and some implications for that. And then finally, the legislative update. While the eighty-fifth session of the Texas Legislature doesn't convene until January the tenth, much of the agenda for the upcoming session has already been established by the interim work of the House and Senate committees. And that does include today's hearing by the House Public Education Committee on so-called school choice programs.
Vouchers.
Vouchers in education savings accounts.
Using tax money without accountability.
Based on the interim committee charges and recent remarks from the lieutenant governor, it's clear that the upcoming legislative session will see a concerted effort to divert tax dollars to private schools through education savings accounts, which are essentially more expansive voucher programs that can be used to pay for homeschooling expenses in addition to private school tuition. While our legislators won't be forced to act on school finance by the courts, will be likely to be several proposals before the legislature in the upcoming session. However, it's not clear that those proposals will ultimately provide students with adequate funding or taxpayers with greater equity. For example, the chairman of the Senate Education Committee on Education has called for simplifying funding formulas. You talked about that earlier. But also said that school districts should find ways to do more with less. And additionally, some legislators are advocating tying school funding to performance. So, we're taking part in an ongoing conversation with Hugh Shine about the district's needs in the upcoming legislative session. I'm also working closely with Bell County Superintendent's and the Temple Chamber of Commerce to develop a shared agenda for the legislative session. And anyone who cares about publication, public education has some really very real reasons to be concerned about this upcoming legislative session. And then, of course, there are some bright spots, some reasons to be optimistic too. And like you mentioned today, Thomas Ratliff's hearing. Thomas Ratliff is the vice chair of the State Board of Education. He did make a compelling case that public schools perform better than charter schools. Also at that hearing, pastors for Texas Children Executive Director Charles Johnson made a passionate case for more obligation to support public education. And so, there are people across our state who will stand up for Texas public schools. And we thank you for your part in that. And it was really great to hear you all talk about those pieces from the session or from your conference, recent conference. That's all I have.
Do I have any questions? You know, that might be a good segue back to, if you're in there. Let's, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Let's back up to the number, what is number six on the agenda? The resolution designating October twenty sixteen as a school priority. The resolution designating October 2016 as the school priority month for Belton School District. That's on page 29, I believe. I know we're jumping around, apologize for that. We want to make sure all of those who are being recognized get here. There is, the Make Education a Priority, there's a sign down here. This is a, a group, and you mentioned, uh, groups that are, folks who have been part of that. We've participated in this in the past. This is a, the group that, that has really let out in trying to speak against the privatizers and those who would take away from our community schools, our schools. And so the Make Education a Priority is a movement, it's really a very, a neat grassroots movement. It's school board members and it's parents and, and folks getting together and pushing back on the legislature against their efforts. And what they've done is, is established October of, of, October prior to the biennial legislative session is the opportunity to make sure that the word is out, to connect with legislators to, to make sure that we're publicizing information. What's significant about October is it's right before the legislative session, before you get into holidays, and then you go quickly into the session, so it's a good timing for that. As Dr. Cannon just mentioned, we've been working very actively with Hugh Shine, our representative-elect, who will, who is very engaged with us and, and very actively involved, has been coming to events all along. And so I, I don't know there's anything special for us in October, but we've been reaching out and will continue to reach out through him. The Senate is very much becoming increasingly antagonistic towards public education, frankly, and so our hope is with the House, and that was shown today. But as Sue mentioned, Thomas Ratliff, who's the Vice Chair of the State Board, is leaving, he's, he didn't run for reelection. Jimmy Don Acock, who is Chair of the House of Public Ed, is retired, and he's not returning. Marsha Forni, another real advocate for special ed who's on this, on that committee, is not going to be there next session. And others. Susan King, for example, is on, on the House Education Committee and a great advocate for public education and will not be there. So there will be some changes more, and so this is all about the resolution. So I, I think if you skip over a couple of pages, you'll get to this resolution. I'm, I'm not going to read the resolution, you've had an opportunity to, and, and we'll have it up on the screen there for those who haven't. This is a resolution to acknowledge our engagement in the legislative process and our role as advocates for our communities, our schools, and our children. And so want, wanted to officially add that to our to-do. So it's my recommendation that we pass this resolution and continue our efforts to educate our, our community about the need to advocate for our community, our schools, our kids. Is there a motion to approve? Motion from Ms. Cullen, second from Ms. Winkler. Any other comments, questions, or favor of the motion, raise a hand. Pass the motion. We will do that, we'll sign that, put it out, and continue. We've had this sign up here for, for some time. Okay, it's five minutes till. Do y'all need a break before we bring all our students in? Would you like to take a break? We kind of need to reset so we can get everybody in. So let's take a five-minute break. At this time, we'll, I see the hallway is getting crowded, so we'll try and get them all in so we can begin to recognize them and move on through our agenda.
To have your attention, we'd like to get started again. Thank you for waiting for us as we reset a little bit and gathered in a few more folks that we could recognize. We, we've been a little bit out of order, but we're going to continue that, be out of order because I'd like to go straight to our recognitions. We like to celebrate, and we have some students and some faculty to recognize today, so let's begin with our National Merit Scholarship commended students.
So every year, about 1.5 million high school students take the PSAT, and of those students, just 50,000 advance in the National Merit Scholarship Program. And tonight, we're excited to recognize our students who are commended students through the National Merit Scholarship Program. They are from Belton High School, Madeline Chappett, Brittany Green, Ru Pu Zhao, and Sierra Reisner, and from, absolutely, come on up.
Don't be shy. This is a photo op. Let me pause, hang on a second. I didn't say this, I used to say at the beginning. Parents, this is a photo op. We want you to feel very comfortable taking pictures. We're going to present a certificate, line everybody up, and take a picture, but we want you to take pictures too. So, okay.
And from Belton New Tech, we have three seniors who are commended students this year, Morgan Callen, Ian Gish, and Shane Warren.
Come on up, guys.
So, very exciting to have this group of students, this group of students.
Missing a couple of them, but we've got several here, three. Okay. And, and we'll get you in a picture with these board members representing us. Parents, don't be shy, come take pictures. But Ms. Gordon will be taking pictures to put up on our website. Congratulations.
Oh, hang on, we're not done. Were any of y'all recognized as junior, Superintendent's Junior Scholars?
Hi.
You were. Awesome. See, there you go. One of the things we told you back then at that, if you remember, many years ago, we told you, "Move on and become a National Merit Scholar and come back and see us." So congratulations, you did great. You did it. And that is what we want. Okay. Are we going to go, okay, next one's the State of Texas Elementary Teacher of the Year finalist. Let's do that next.
Really excited to celebrate our state elementary teacher of the year finalist tonight. Like Gaye Pittenger is a fifth grade teacher at Lakewood Elementary School. She's one of just three finalists for the Texas Elementary Teacher of the Year. We're really excited to be in Austin last Friday for the announcement of the awards and to celebrate this. It's a long journey to be a finalist for state teacher of the year. It starts out at the campus level where a teacher of the year is selected, then it goes to the district level, then the regional level, then there's another cut to select the finalists, and then interviews at the state level. We're incredibly proud to be represented across the state by Mrs. Pittinger.
And as far as we know, Belton ISD has never had, in the history of the state teacher of the year, a finalist, and Region 12 told us, they never had a finalist in the Texas State Teacher of the Year Award. That's a.
Woo!
So, so because of that, historically, she gets to say a couple of words, especially once.
Yes, I did ask to, to say a couple of words. This has been an extraordinary experience, and, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. The last question they asked me the other day during the interview was, "How do we keep teachers from leaving the profession?" And my answer, one of my answers is through appreciation, and, and you guys have, really, you're really good at that. Thank you very much for appreciating the hard work that, that people do. I also want to turn it a little bit, and I want to say thank you to y'all, because this has been an extraordinary experience for me, but I couldn't have done it without the support of this community and, and everyone else. So, board, thank you so much for being there and being supportive, not only of me, but of all of BISD. Susan, you have a wonderful team. Thank you so much for doing so much for the kids of Belton and the community of, of Belton. Y'all are wonderful, thank you so much. I have an incredible team at Lakewood that is supportive and loves kids, and it's an honor and a privilege to work there. Thank you so much. I, I, I love, oh, Randy Pittinger is not the only one that loves Belton.
Look, I loves Belton, and she loves her kids, and I, just a little sneak thing, she was so relieved to not win because she said that would have taken her away from her children and out of the classroom. And she couldn't wait to get, on Friday, she said, "I hope I can go back to my class on Monday. I want to be with the children more than I want to be with all these adults." So, in Austin, who want to do advocacy kind of things. That's a great teacher, thank you. Proud of you. Okay, next, next recognition, our 2016 National Blue Ribbon School, again, the very first time in Belton.
Absolutely, a lot of historic firsts that we're celebrating tonight. The Texas Education Agency nominated just 26 schools statewide for the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program, and ultimately, the U.S. Department of Education selected just 329 schools across the country for this prestigious national award. So tonight, we're really excited to celebrate Leon Heights' election as a 2016 National Blue Ribbon School. And in just a couple of weeks, we'll have a small delegation going to Washington, D.C. to accept that award and to participate in the National Blue Ribbon Schools Conference.
We thank you too. Y'all have been a great support to us, and the community just fills your love, and my campus just really fills the support that you've given us, so they're really excited about this, and we couldn't have done it without you.
Thank you, Tiffany. We, we really are proud of Leon Heights' staff, and, and the students obviously are, are what make Leon Heights what it is, but the, the staff and the faculty and the parents and the, the neighborhood, that is a true school. And, and Mike did an extremely great job of expressing that that is, that's, that's a community school. And that's, that, that ceremony and the things you said really epitomized our school, our community. This is not some public school or some government school like they want to call us, that's our school. And, and we own, that's, that's so significant, the connection between our community and that school. So it is a great recognition for our community. So thank you.
And he also did a great job in corralling them.
Yeah.
He asked them all to come up and surround him.
That was frightening.
The teachers were a little nervous. However, he did well, he did well, he did a bunch of this, you know, you know what that means?
The high five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He got them under control. The rest of us were just dying laughing, it was so much fun to watch.
All right, we have another Educator of the Year recognition from the Bell County Judges and Commissioners Committee on People with Disabilities.
The transition from high school to the adult world is a very challenging time for a lot of our families and our students with special needs. And the thing that you hear from everyone is the difference that Margaret Chadwick makes through the Delta Program for those students in helping them to find their groove and be successful after they leave high school. And that was why she was recognized at the annual Rusty Awards banquet last week with this award, and it's, it's richly deserved.
Wait a minute, one more, one more picture.
Can I say something about Margaret?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I, I just want to say something about Margaret because she taught for me when I was a principal in Belton ISD. She's one of the best special education teachers you will ever meet, and she does a hard job, and she does it beautifully, and we just want to thank you and celebrate with you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do for our kids.
Hard job.
And we're still thankful to, to Commissioners and, and Bell County Judge for recognizing you, it's a great honor. Congratulations, we're proud of you.
Thank you.
All right, how about the Rotary Educator of the Month from the Temple Rotary Club?
Yeah, we get to recognize another outstanding educator, Lindsay Allison, also from Lakewood Elementary. Lindsay is a first grade teacher at Lakewood. She's in her 27th year in education and her 16th year with Belton ISD, and, and something interesting we learned about her is she's had all 27 years in first grade.
Awesome.
And she serves as a grade-level team leader. She helps write the district's first-grade curriculum, and she's actually been recognized as Belton ISD's Teacher of the Year in 2007 and 2008. And she's well-known for her love of children.
Don't run off, you're not done.
And her willingness to work with new teachers and be that teacher of not only children but the adults. Judy Schiller, Principal at Lakewood, stated, "Miss Allison is a breath of fresh air."
Why is Judy up here? You're supposed to be up here. This is a photo op.
So as Judy's coming up, I'll, I'll read her quote for you.
Keep, keep going, while.
She says, "Miss Allison is a breath of fresh air for all who call Lakewood home. Our students, staff, and parents enjoy her constant zest for teaching, her positive attitude, and her drive to increase student achievement."
Another one of those great teachers making a difference for kids, thank you. Proud of you. Okay, um, yes, you're next. Principal, and October is a lot of things, but it is also Principal Appreciation Month, and so we'd like to take a moment to recognize them in a special way.
Yes, we do. Governor Greg Abbott has proclaimed October as Principals' Month. His proclamation reads in part, "As school leaders, principals and, or, principals are entrusted with our most valuable resource, our next generation of leaders. These students are our promise for the future, and it is critical that they receive a rigorous and well-rounded education. At this time, I encourage all Texans to acknowledge the important role principals play in ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education. And as a former principal myself, I can tell you that being a principal is one of the most difficult and complex jobs probably of any profession. And unless you've done the job, you really can't appreciate the work that our principals do and the complexity of those positions. Our leaders are expected to be masterful in a multitude of skills, including instruction, behavior, staff development, facilities, marketing, budget, and conflict, conflict resolution, just to name a few. They work with not only our students, but their parents and the entire communities that they serve. So tonight, we want to say thank you to each of our principals for all the work that they do for our students in Belton ISD and for the great culture that they have created, created on their campuses. I presented last week to the Leadership Belton Group, and one of their questions was, "What is it about Belton ISD?" And it, it, there is a special culture here that is very focused on students, and it starts with those principals and those schools. So I want to introduce our principals. We have a Belton ISD pin to give each of them, and we're going to ask them to come up and be recognized and have your picture made, and we're going to ask our board members to come and shake your hands and thank you for the work that you do. So our principals are Sue Banfield, at the Belton Early Childhood School. Elizabeth, yes, please clap. Come on up. Elizabeth McMurtry at Chisholm Trail Elementary. Amy Armstrong, High Point Elementary. Tiffany Weiss, Leon Heights Elementary. Judy Schiller, Lakewood Elementary. Jennifer Connor at Miller Heights Elementary. Pam Neves, Pertle Elementary. Stacy Cox, Southwest Elementary. Julie Manley, Sparta, Sparta Elementary. Michelle Tisch, Tarver Elementary. Chris Hobson, Lake Belton Middle School. Joe Brown, North Belton Middle School. I think Joe's out today. Kiana White, South Belton Middle School. Chris DeBois, Belton High School. I didn't see Chris come in. Jill Ross, Belton New Tech High School at Wasco. And Emilio Oliveras. Emilio, Coordinator of our DAEP. That's it, they, he's not here.
Okay.
All right, let's take a picture.
Y'all got a spreadsheet and get a picture, board members will get out. Well, we'll get a whole spreadsheet. All right, all right. But behind us.
All right. And, one, two, three, and one, one, two, three.
We'll have Photoshop in those two, but before you go, I just want to again echo what Susan said. We know you spent enormous amounts of time creating the right culture of safety and excellence, and I expect faces from our faculty to know what you're doing. You're making a difference. You are making a difference.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have. Okay, and then we have one more, our Monthly Big Red Community Partner Award. Just Trey here.
As Dr. Kincaid mentioned in the superintendent's report, the Beef Red Carpet Event was a great event, and it was a lot of fun, and that's not a phrase you hear often describing a fundraiser, right? One of the reasons that it was such fun was that Trey Galloway and his team at Central Texas Auction Services really go above and beyond to make that event successful. And they, like I said, make fundraising fun, they make giving to be fun, and in turn, they're doing a lot to support our students and our teachers through the scholarships and grants at Beef Awards. So, for that reason, Central Texas Auction Services is our Big Red Community Partner for the month of October.
All right, we'll take a look. Trey Thomas, thanks. Good, it's a great time to give a birthday. Thank you. Having good partners like that makes fundraising fun. I like that. That's a good way to put it. Okay, I think we've gotten through all our recognitions. Did we miss any? Okay, so, at this time, it is 6:20. Yeah, it's 6:20. And we will open a public hearing regarding designating the Belton Independent School District a District of Innovation.
All right, sorry, that snuck up on me. All right, this is a public hearing, so this is for you all, public. And the 84th Texas Legislature in House Bill 1842 established a concept called a District of Innovation with the purpose to afford traditional independent school districts most of the flexibilities that are open to, open enrollment charter schools. So, this is a public hearing that explains the concept and informs the public of the district's intent to develop an innovation plan. And so, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have about District of Innovation, either during the presentation or after, and I'm open to just raising your hand and asking a question if you have one. So, the purpose, why consider a District of Innovation? Districts can gain greater local control, they can decide which flexibilities suit their local needs, it allows for increased freedom to make decisions on what's best for BISD students, and that align with our district's vision, mission, and beliefs. There's some added flexibility, especially with respect to the school calendar, attendance, the instructional model for students, and possibly some flexibilities in the use of compensatory education funds. And of course, it complements the work of our district improvement plan. Next slide there, the legislation provides an opportunity to exempt certain Texas Education Code requirements which are afforded to charter schools, such as the school start date, the 90% attendance rule, minimum minutes of instruction, class size ratios, the teacher appraisal system, teacher certification, teacher contracts and benefits, and even site-based decision-making. And those are only some examples because the purpose of the work to happen with a committee is for the committee to define what that innovation might look like in the district and to discuss the exemptions that the district would like to take to deviate from what is required by the Texas Education Agency. And so, while those are some examples that are found currently in some of the innovation plans that are out across the state by some 30, 35 school districts, they may not all be right for Belton ISD. And so, we enter into the process with no predetermined plan for these particular areas. However, I will mention that we are interested in looking at the school start date because of the way that the calendar falls next year, but we want to, we want to enter the process with an open mind and explore what's possible for the school district. So, the process had to have been initiated by either a resolution adopted by the board or a petition signed by a majority of the District Advisory Committee, which is DEWIC for us. Our board did pass a resolution last month on September the 19th. The board has to hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing at this time, to consider whether the district should pursue the opportunity or not. And then, the board can take action to move forward with the appointment of a committee, which is on the agenda for this evening or not, which would then stop the process, and that's the board's decision. The board, if the board decides to pursue the designation, then of course, the board appoints a committee. That committee should include representatives from DEWIC, additional staff, parent and community representatives that would be appointed by the board, and any recommendations from the superintendent. And there are no requirements for the size or makeup of that committee. And so, it is a pretty open-ended process, except for those requirements that I've talked about already, the resolution, the public hearing, appointing a committee, and then there's some requirements for a public hearing on the final version of the plan, a posting requirement on the website for 30 days, and then a notification to the Commissioner of Education. And so, this is that process that we have outlined. These are our dates that we have developed with the idea of being completed by the end of February. However, those are not set in stone. Those were just dates that we calendared out based on our desire to move forward with the process. And so, that's what it looks like in a nutshell. Should the board approve the committee this evening, then we would begin work as early as next week. We'd start, we're going to start reviewing plans of other school districts. I'll be attending a session in Mansfield ISD with some folks from TEA and some other school districts to hear what's going on around the state. And then, we'll come back and update DEWIC and the board along the way before that plan is rolled out. Once the plan is delivered to the board, it does require two-thirds, next slide, a majority vote of the board, and that plan would be, could be good for up to five years. It's interesting to note that the Commissioner of Education, although we're required to notify him of the district's plan, he does not approve the plans. They're essentially approved by the Board of Trustees, given that they meet all of the requirements, and then there aren't some, there are some things in Education Code that you cannot exempt yourself from. However, the board does approve, does have the final authority to approve the plan, and then we notify the Commissioner. The Commissioner must submit a report to the legislature, and then your, of course, your plan could be terminated if you have unacceptable academic or financial performance ratings, and then must be after three consecutive years. And we can change the plan at any time. We can amend it, rescind it, or renew it by a majority vote of our DEWIC committee and two-thirds majority vote of our Board of Trustees. And so, then the next slide, there are some of the districts that are considering or have already passed an innovation plan. All of these districts have their plans posted, most on their school district websites, but however, if you were to search for District of Innovation, Texas Education Agency, you would pull up a page that has all of the district's plans posted, and they're pretty simple plans that you can pull up and see what other school districts are doing. So, I would propose that we study those with our committee and brainstorm some, some things that we might like to do in Belton ISD, given, given some flexibility that we may not already have. And so, we'll have to identify those things. And so, that's District of Innovation in a nutshell. It's a little bit vague, so the committee will have its work cut out for it to identify how we'd like to use this. So, that's it. May I answer any questions?
If anybody has any questions, this is a public hearing, so anyone having any questions or comments regarding the districts of plan for districts of innovation? Hearing none. Board members have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing at 6:29. And move on to our next agenda, which is going back to our item we pulled from the consensus agenda to appoint, the appointment of a District of Innovation Planning Committee as was just described. That's on page 75 or 76, I believe. You'll pull that list up. A number of district employees and other, and DEWIC employees, page 75. I think the witness was presented to DEWIC, several members there requested volunteers to participate in that. We talked about that last night at this meeting, and Dr. Kincaid asked for recommendations. And so, we have a list of those. If you, do you have, anybody else they'd like to add on here to the committee? Would you like to question addition?
Can I?
Yep.
He's interested.
Okay.
Justin is interested in the hearing.
Okay, sure.
We can add that as a proposed, we'll, along with everybody who's, okay, listen, I know one of the goals is to keep this as a smaller group, but would you like to make the motion to approve the committee with the addition of Justin Winter?
I'd like.
Okay.
Would you like me to say that specifically?
I got you. I got that motion to approve the committee as recommended with the addition of Justin Winter. That motion, or a second to that motion, a second from this George. Any other, any other additions or comments? On better motion, red hand. Ask the team to say, okay, good deal. We will then put that group to work and look forward to hearing what kind of innovative things they might come up with, and what thoughts we have, calendars, and school times and those sorts of things. I think there's plenty of opportunities to look at variety, but I hope there's also some increasingly innovative things we might can do with our school days and times and...
Well, I was really pleased that we had so many volunteer from the DEWIC committee who were interested in putting in a little more time to talk about it.
That is a good thing. Usually, I was afraid we might have a hard time recruiting, but actually, the DEWIC group are already engaged in...
They are.
Other processes, and so, they're in a good position, so...
Yes, we threw them a curveball last year.
Yeah, and, that's right, they want to be involved. And I didn't mention on there, but I hope you noticed, Sue, Jordan's going to represent us as a board member, but she's a mom, and she's going to be a mom and a community person, but also represent us as a board and be able to, to be an active, engaged member, but also be able to help give feedback to us through the process. I think that's important in our question to the board member on there, so. Great, okay. Okay, now, we're going to jump back to our public comments, because I skipped over that in our jumping around. Did I, I didn't see anybody sign up? If anybody signed up for public comments, would you like to make a public comment? Okay, you'll come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please? We'll have you fill out a form a little bit later. That's all, come on up to the podium.
I just filled one out, I think, too, back to Justin.
Good evening, Board. My name is Mrs. Eddings, and my question is in regards to the art, as far as, because my son had brought to my attention one time that, on our rate of school, at the elementary school, that there is no art in the elementary school. And I did some research, and I know seven out of the nine elementary schools has art, so I was just wondering, how come at least two of the schools do not have any form of art, whether it be a club, or, or art class, or anything like that at the elementary level?
I'll tell you what, let me just make sure, and could you give your full name and address so they can put it in a minute before we're supposed to do that?
I, yes.
So, Connie will get that for you.
Okay.
Go ahead and say that.
It's Yolanda Eddings. The address is 1313, I don't want to do it over. Can I, do I have to do it over? Do I have to say it?
Yeah, we're recorded.
Okay.
We're just public on it, so.
Okay, 1313 Emerald Gate Drive, and it's in Temple, Texas.
Okay. Let me, first of all, tell you that unless something is on our agenda, we are prohibited from discussing that. We can give you answers, but the general answer I would give you is, please talk with your son's principal at that school and maybe get a little bit further information. And then, I'm going to direct you to Dr. Lovezman, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, and she's going to be able to give you the information about all of our curriculum programs, and we'll follow up specifically on what, where, and how, and those specific making processes.
Okay.
And again, because it's not an item on our agenda, we don't, can't really address all that, but I certainly want to direct you to the right people who have the right information.
Exactly, no worries.
So, the principal is the best person to talk to, and then, Dr. Lovezman is here if that principal is not present.
Okay.
For you to talk to, and then give you a lot of detail, a lot of information about that, and follow up.
Okay, I did speak, yeah, I did speak with the principal already, and then I didn't know if this was the, yeah, the next step, but, yeah, so I was like, well, I'll just come to the meeting and, yeah.
Yeah, well, I appreciate, I appreciate your interest in the arts, that is something very important to us.
Yes, okay.
Appreciate you asking the question and encourage you, Dr. Lovezman.
Will do.
After the meeting or later.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have a question or comment? Okay, then, I'm going to take out order again, because I, we need to get to our students. Sorry, Schiller. Amanda, are you ready? Would you, let's, let's let our students come up, discuss the computer science program. We've got students here, anytime we got students waiting on us, I want to get to them. Thank you all for coming again. All right.
All right, okay. Well, I want to start off and tell you thank you for letting us talk to you about our new computer science program. As you know, we're in our first year of offering computer science, and this does meet our vision in preparing every student for tomorrow's world. We're learning that by 2018, more than half of all STEM jobs are projected to be in a computer science-related field. One interesting statistic is that nine in 10, out of 10 parents want their child to be in a computer science course, or they think that it's a good use of school resources. But interestingly, only one in four schools offer computer science. And so, we want to thank you as a board for supporting our program so that we can be one of those schools that offers computer science. This year, we are offering Introduction to Computer Science. We have 78 students enrolled between Belton High School and Belton New Tech High School at Wasco. And students learn the fundamentals of programming and building computational thinking skills, and then they get to apply what they know to design solutions such as crowdsourcing apps. This is just a brief look at our pathways, what, this year, we're offering Intro to Computer Science, next year, we'll be offering Computer Science and Software Engineering, and then past that, we're exploring some dual-credit options with Temple College, an Advanced Placement Computer Science course, and then Project Lead the Way is also starting a cybersecurity course that we're very interested in offering. So, by the 18, 19 school year, we should be able to choose the different paths that we want to take for this program. And we are very excited about the renovations to our new space for computer science. That's just a glimpse of it. And I have with me today our teacher, this is Mr. Jim Allman, and he has 19 years' experience, and he is also a Master Project Lead the Way teacher. He has the opportunity to fly nationally to train other Project Lead the Way teachers during the summer so that they become master teachers. So, we were very lucky to get him and have him help us develop our program. So, I'm going to turn it over to him.
Thank you for coming to Belton, by the way. Thank you. Project Lead the Way is a national organization that is promoting STEM education, which is science, technology, education, and math. And they start off with a gateway program for, I'm sorry, launch program for the elementary kids, and it allows teachers to integrate science, technology, engineering, math into their curriculum. And then, after that, they have the gateway program for middle school. And at the high school, we had, they split it into three tracks. You have biomedical engineering, which we already have started at Belton as well, and then computer science. And I've been teaching computer science for quite a while, and I'm really excited about Project Lead the Way and what they offer in computer science. Like she said, we start off with the introduction to computer science, which is a great beginning for computers, to start designing apps. We will also get into Python programming later in the year. And then, next year, in the computer science principles class, or the computer science software engineering, we cover a lot of different things, not only is it Scratch, App Inventor, Python, PHP, SQL, I mean, we cover a bunch of stuff. So, I'm really excited to be a part of that. Today, I have a couple of students here that would like to demonstrate their apps that they have created in class. First, Ashley has an app that we called Sprite Smash, and she just came from band, so we really appreciate the band for letting her out.
Yeah, so, my app, the whole screen one is a button with a canvas behind it, and you hit the screen, and it starts in the zoom... And you hit the screen and it starts in the zoo, like with the alligator. So you hit the alligator button and then the sprite bounces around quicker with each animal in the closure that you get to, so you get to the zebra. And then you hit it again and then the lion goes a little bit faster. And then the monkey goes faster than that. So it's kind of cute.
It goes really fast.
It's a little bit harder than it looks.
You designed it.
No, you think I'd be able to play it. But, yeah, so that's my app.
Good job. Thank you, Ashley.
And then next we have Macon with her digital doodle app.
I don't know if you saw that at all, but in the beginning of the year, we actually got to make like a background for it in paint. So I hope you didn't see it. It didn't look too good. Either way, this is, this is digital doodle. Basically, you can take a picture.
Pick it up, take a picture.
Wait, wait, hold on. You can take a picture. And it turns its sideways, but then you can choose colors and choose the size of your pen. And then you can draw all over it. So I think I'm just gonna...
Give me my stuff.
I think, I think that's a good representation. And actually, we were only really supposed to make three colors, but I actually added a lot more than that. So I can do light blue and pink. And I now can clear it by shaking the screen. Now, it only clears the pen, so I had to add another button that said the clear pick. So now I can take another picture there. No.
Oh, there you go. Come on, Ashley.
And there we go. That's basically my app.
There you go. Good job. And you wrote the code. Did Elvis make that happen, huh?
Yeah.
Cool.
The thing that I super love about computer science is that Mr. Allman's always there to help us with all the questions that we have. And it makes us think about what's going on and like on the digital doodle, for sure, like you see Snapchat and you're like, how do they do that? And it's cool to actually know how they do it.
You understand how things happen.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, I got to ask. So y'all are representing the entire class. How many, how many other female students are there in...
I think my class is pretty half and half.
Is it?
Yeah.
Great.
And my class, there's four.
Out of...
Like twenty-something.
Okay. So the, so, but your class is pretty evenly. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Glad to hear that. That's exciting.
Oh, well, I guess since she told it. I'm trying to be a computer science major when I get into college. So I think this is a really good start for me to like move on, like trying to get a scholarship into UT or like just attempting to become what I want to be as a video game designer. So it's like, it's a really good stepping stone before I start college, before I actually get thrown into the snake pit. It's like a nice beginning to my whole career.
Sure.
In high school.
Great, wonderful. Ashley?
Oh, I want to be an engineer. So no matter what part of engineering you go into, there's always going to be a whole bunch of like computer stuff. And it's awesome to know like the basics before you try to like jump in the snake pit and be like drowning and everything that, because the professors in college won't walk you through it and help you at all, so.
That's what they say.
Yeah, that's true.
Great, good stuff. Anything else?
I just want to add that we're still working with our business partners, CGI, in developing our program. And they were also part of the Computer Science for All movement. So just thank you for letting us present to you tonight.
Well, excited about Project Lead the Way being a resource for us to do some innovative things for our students. Thank you for, Mr. Allman, for providing this. Guys, great job. It's cool stuff. Good presentation, too.
Thank you.
Presented well on your programs. Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate your support of the program. So good job, guys. All right, now, where did Mr. Shiller go?
Here he comes. This might be the shortest one of these I've ever seen.
Hope so.
Yeah.
All right, now we can, we're going to jump back up to our employment agenda.
Thank you. If you remember last month, I said we had two positions that we're working on and we'll bring those to you this month. And so we do have two recommendations to recommend tonight for you. And that will bring us to full capacity. We have received one resignation, have posted a position for mid-year, but we have not released that person until we can find a suitable replacement, so.
Okay. Motion to approve? Thank you. Motion, Mr. Camden, second. Mr. Carruthers?
We'll make a minute.
Any other questions? Comments? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Good job. Thank you. All right. Mr. Hitz, talk to us about T-Test.
Just trying to wake y'all up. Yes, Rachel. Okay. Well, T-Test is the Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System. And it was piloted by approximately sixty districts in 2014, fifteen, and two hundred districts in fifteen, sixteen. And so this year, it's the state recommended system. And in July, the board adopted and identified T-Test as our evaluation system for teachers. And so I want to talk about the impact on practice. And as I go through these slides, hopefully you'll see how the impact on practice is connected to the actual procedures. So one thing is it's time. It's time on our administrators to document and also have the conversations, but it's quality time focused on instruction. The rubric, I'll show you in a little bit. It is vastly improved over P-DOS. And you'll see that there's a lot more communication and teacher input in this process. And then certainly because there, there's early conversations with teachers, the coaching opportunities are increased. And it really gives the administrator a perspective and some input from that staff member on what their needs are within the first six weeks of school. And so I wanted to do a little side by side so you can kind of see how they match up. T-Test has four domains, and of those four domains, there's sixteen dimensions, so roughly four per domain, four dimensions per domain. And P-DOS had eight domains with fifty dimensions. So there's some similarities. And as you follow those bullets down, you'll see goal setting and professional development or the GSPD under T-Test. There's a conference at the beginning of the year where the teacher and the administrator set goals. And they talk about that first, okay? And then the teacher will go back and submit that after that conversation. So you can see it's a collaborative process. But under P-DOS, the teacher would just go online, check off the teaks that they cover and submit it. And there was not a conversation. Or if there was, it was not part of the P-DOS process. Our principals would initiate that. Then the GSPD is a living document. It's kept up with by the teacher throughout the year to, you know, document that goal attainment. And under P-DOS, Part Two and Three, again, the teacher went online and completed some questions and submitted those to their appraiser. And T-Test, there's an end of the year conference, and P-DOS had a summative evaluation. So there's conferences at the end. The difference, we'll talk about that here. The T-Test process by itself, there's an orientation and our principals and campus administrators led a half-day training to get our staff acclimated to the process and introduce them to the rubric. We talked about the goal-setting conference takes place, and then that teacher submits the GSPD. Then there's an observation, and that's the three bullets that are set apart there. There's a pre-conference where the principal will meet with the teacher and they'll talk about what they're going to see in that lesson to help prepare them. It may be some unique student needs that they need to be aware of. It could also be just giving them some background knowledge on what the prior lessons were before they got there. And then there's a forty-five-minute observation with scripting. That's similar to P-DOS. And then there's a post-observation conference. And there's a very, it's a scripted process for that where there's an area of reinforcement, which is basically a strong point, and then an area of reinforcement. And that's an area that is something that needs to be improved on. And it's not necessarily a weakness, and that's identified based on the evidence through scripting. And the end-of-year conference is a process where domain, the teacher comes in, meets with that administrator. Again, it's a collaborative process where they get to talk about the year. And so the difference there for the end-of-year conference under T-Test is the teacher meets with that administrator, they have the conference, and then based on that collaboration and communication, then the domains are scored, or the dimensions. Under P-DOS, the administrator would score them and give them to the teacher and have a conference. So you can see, one of the big goals of T-Test is to allow teachers to have more input in this process. And so just to touch briefly on the rubric, to kind of give you an idea of what it's like, you may have it on your screen in front of you, but if you follow the bullets across, right here in the middle is proficient. And as administrators, you're always starting with proficient, and you're moving left or right based on the evidence. So you'll see proficient moving down is developing, and improvement needed would be, area obviously needs to be improved. And then from proficient on the way up, you're looking at accomplished and distinguished. And what you'll notice is, under improvement needed, those are teacher-centered activities. And under distinguished, on the left-hand side, those are student-centered activities. So obviously, that's the direction we want to be moving. So to give you an idea, just running across, following the first bullet, under proficient, a proficient teacher, looking at dimension four point four, which is professional practices and responsibility and school community involvement. So under proficient, the first bullet, you look at contacts, the evidence is contacts, parents, or guardians regularly regarding students' academic, social, and emotional growth. Moving down, it just says contacts, parents, guardians in accordance with campus policy. And then moving down further, it's generally just about disciplinary matters. So moving up to a strength, systematically contacts, parents, guardians regarding students' academic and social, emotional growth through various methods. So what you'll see is, what the nice thing for teachers is, they can see what I, what my communication should look like. It's, it's pretty black and white in a sense. Under P-DOS, the old rubric was the administrator trying to figure out a percentage. Well, they did it about eighty percent of the time, or about less than fifty percent of the time, where this is more behavior-based. And same thing on instruction. So what you'll notice is these rubrics, they look the same on all sixteen dimensions. So there's sixteen of these, and they look the same. The right-hand side, there's teacher-centered activities, and the left-hand side is moving towards those student-centered instruction. So to step away from T-Test, I want to touch on T-PESS or the principal evaluation. And the state has come up with the principal standards. And these are instructional leadership, human capital, executive leadership, school culture, and strategic operations. And these are the new standards that fall under T-PESS. And we did not adopt T-PESS, but I do want to show you what T-PESS included and then what our evaluation includes. So our evaluation is aligned to those same standards. We have a September goal setting. They have a self-assessment and goal setting. We have campus visits and informal meetings throughout the year. So does T-PESS. There's a January evaluation process for us. There's a mid-year process for T-PESS. There's a June performance evaluation or conference under our system. And then you'll see under T-PESS, there's artifacts, evidence, and an end-of-year performance. And so that's where we really stepped away. So why not T-PESS? We spent a lot of time in our district planning process, and we value that. And coming up with those targeted district initiatives are important to us. And we felt like T-PESS was, was pretty broad. It wasn't widely piloted across the state. And for us to spend the time that we do developing our district plan and those targeted district initiatives, putting those in our evaluation system communicates expectations to our staff, but also helps us all work toward that common goal. As far as the systems, under T-PESS, the principals would be responsible for basically creating a portfolio. And under our system, we already have systems in place that have all that information in them. Those include our comprehensive needs assessment, goal-setting conferences. Edge of Foria has more data than we can, can imagine. There are campus climate surveys, student community engagement rating process. So we have all those things in place. And we wanted our principals, again, to spend time implementing T-Test and not necessarily running a report and building a portfolio. Questions?
Calvin, I'm just really excited about the data we collect from this and from administrators because I, I just believe in communication and I believe in teachers having the, the opportunity to engage with their leadership and really get to know their principals and, but I love how this provides them the expectation of how to be distinguished. How do you become the best at what you do in your field and be an expert? And I don't think that was written before, and it's not always easily communicated from principals because your day is consumed with a thousand other things, too. And sometimes it's shadowing this person or that person. And to see research-based statistics of this is what a distinguished teacher looks like, I think is going to be so incredible, especially for our new teacher. So I'm really anxious to see how that goes and how the principals feel that this is, it's, it's giving the ownership of it to the teacher, I believe. And that, you know, that's what I, you know, teach my kids at home. You have to be responsible for your actions. And so teaching that now maybe can relate down to our students. And I really do like where the system is heading. So I think it's going to be really great.
Some principals have reported that teachers are really appreciating having the time to be heard.
I've heard that. Extra time with administrators. The concern, though, is, do our administrators have that extra time to do this? I mean, this is, this is from, from a teacher standpoint, perspective, really cool. From an administrator perspective, looks really big.
Different, yeah.
And an extra burden. I mean, mercy, they've got enough to do, and now we've added a lot of time, frankly. That could be extremely valuable.
Maybe in the end, it will pay off.
Right. Investing, investment of time that comes out with some good outcomes. Sure.
Principal feedback is it is, it's taking time. They are also enjoying the conversations.
Opportunities to interact.
And it's focused on instruction. From the pilot districts and even from feedback from our own, initially, it can take four and even as much as eight hours if it gets really complex to do the full process. But they, the pilot districts reassured us that by the end of the year, it's taken two to three hours, which is a little bit longer than P-DOS because you're, you're really focusing on that evidence-based feedback for the teacher. But the, the more we practice it, the more time shaved off.
But that's a lot of time. Multiplied times a bunch of folks. And so we, we understand that's, we're going to have to keep an eye on supporting our administrators, obviously.
Yeah.
We just talked about our principals earlier. There's others, I know, assistants and others who are helping. But, but great idea, conceptually, if we can do this without overloading our...
I would say this is some, the T-Test training was some of the best training I've been to in a very long time. And because it got right to the heart of instruction, which is what we're all about. And so if that investment of time pays off for our kids, I think it'll be worth it.
That's what Amanda was really talking about, so, yeah. I think that's right. Good, great. Okay, good deal. That's a report only. We don't need any action. All right, well, let's talk about construction delivery methods for Belton High School Roofing Project B. We finished Project A. And Phil, you going to get us started here? John Cannon's with us again. We've done Project A successfully.
We have successfully completed Project A, so that's a good thing. Okay, so I believe we spoke. I'm going to go ahead and just give a brief summary of what we've done to date, and then we'll talk briefly about the project that's coming up this year and, and just kind of round it out with the remainder of the project. And then Phil will take over and talk about the delivery method. But just to recap, in 2013, a couple of campuses were assessed from a roofing standpoint to just judge their, their condition and longevity. The high school was one of those, along with Leon Heights and Sparta Elementary School. The high school itself, a good portion of it was, was aged and deteriorated. Large majority of it was over thirty years old, which is a good, long life for a roofing system in this, this part of the country. Various aged deficiencies, blistering, separations of the membranes, ponding water, things that go along with systems that were designed and installed about thirty years ago.[1749.91] go along with systems that were designed and installed about thirty years ago. The total, total square footage of it was one hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet, so again, a good amount. And that, that section was, because of the size and the complexity of it, was deemed to benefit the district. We could divide it into three separate projects to be accomplished as a Project A, B, and C. From there, Project A itself, again, we was, was designed in the previous year and completed this last summer. Again, it's port, that's a portion of the building that was thirty-plus years old. We corrected the drainage, we corrected the thermal value, brought it up to code, brought everything up to code that was required with that. The project was actually completed ahead of schedule and had a wonderful job, so we were very, very proud of the roofing contractor that did a wonderful job there. A couple of side-by-side pictures of that project. The ones on the left, obviously, were the original system, and the ones on the right are, are newer systems.
A big B. Last month, or, so I think I, I mentioned a big B on the top of that would look great as a flyover.
I will point out, if you'll notice...
I got kind of told that wasn't gonna happen, but...
You'll notice these, these are drain strainers that are attached where your roof drains are. I will have you notice the Belton red color.
And I appreciate that. I did notice them.
That, that was a little touch from the, from the contractor, so kudos to them.
Thank you very much.
I will say, they normally paint them blue, and we had to correct that on the first project.
We appreciate that.
So we did, we did try to do it right. So just a few more pictures, just a few more pictures of the, of the systems themselves with existing on the left and new on the right. Again, the same as well. So Project B, the project we're actually discussing this, this evening, it's this, it's the remainder of the thirty-year-old portion. The next portion is only, it's gonna be about twenty years old by the time that we get to it, which is, again, a good, a good lifespan for, for a roof system. But this is the same thing. It's an existing system. It's actually probably two systems that were, have been installed, one on top of the other as time has gone by. The two systems are separating from one another, resulting in what the industry calls blistering, or just separations of the plies. Lot of standing water, drainage is not, not quite adequate, overflow and, and primary drainage. It's, it's hard to get the water there when you have that many wrinkles in your roof, and it's, doesn't have the proper slope to get it there. Couple of pictures of, of the existing condition of the, oh, I do want to hit on the schedule of this. This, this project is a slightly larger, whereas the Project A was fifty-six thousand square feet, this is sixty-six, so it will take a little bit longer. The estimated construction cost for the roofing itself is one-point-six. This project will include HVAC controls and upgrades, so all of the rooftop units that are located within the scope of this roof replacement will get replaced with new, along with the controls that go along with those units. That's, that's estimated at about a sixty-thousand-dollar construction cost. So total is, is one-point-seven-two-eight, which is gonna get us, get us through this system here. But the timeline itself will be a little bit longer. We'll, we'll discuss the, the project scheduling in a minute, but. Existing conditions, again, very similar to the ones that you saw from Project A, where we've got a lot of repairs, all the white sections are repairs that have been, that have been done to various locations, mainly in drains and flashing conditions. You'll notice the, the waviness that you happen to see in the membrane itself, that's actually where it's separating. The waviness is actually built up and popped up. It's collecting dirt and other things between those. That's why they, they appear lighter in color. But we'll get all of that corrected and move forward. So that's Project B, the one that we're actually discussing tonight. Project C, just a quick, quick review of what's coming up with that. That will be the remaining portion of, of the first, first round of Belton High School that was identified from the 2013 assessments. This system is a little different. It's not quite as old. It's only, it's currently about eighteen. It'll be close to twenty by the time we get, get to actual construction. It's, it, it does have signs of aging, though. The widespread blistering like we talked about, surface crazing, numerous repairs and failing penetrations. This is the smallest of the three. Obviously, it's only about thirty-two thousand square feet. It's gonna be completed in about half the time, so we're estimating approximately a month to, from start of construction to finish of construction, which is good. Get it out of there, also because it's at the front of the school. You don't want to have anything lingering at the time of coming, so that'll be good to get that one out of the way. And it has an estimated construction budget of about seven-hundred-thousand dollars, so it's, it is the smallest of the others. Couple of pictures of, of the area of Project C. You can see the, the patches and the repairs. Roof drains, obviously, the flashings have been, have been sealed and resealed and repaired multiple times. And again, the surface crazing, the various items that go along with just a roof system at sad age. So all in all, for them to have lasted as long, lasted as long as they have, you guys have done a great job maintaining them. It's just everything, everything has its lifespan, and we're reaching the end of them.
Thirty years is a long time for a roof system, right?
Thirty years is an extremely long time for a roof system. It is, especially a low-slope roof system like this. I mean, if you're talking about a metal system or something with a really steep slope, yes. But low-slope systems, to get to thirty years, that's, that speaks a lot on the maintenance side of things, and you guys have done a good job.
Or that we're overdue on fixing it, too.
I, I understand there are a few leaks, but yeah, it's for, for the age that you're probably doing pretty good. Schedule-wise, Project A is obviously complete. Project B, board approval of delivery method tonight. We'll actually have a fifty percent set of design documents on the twenty-eighth of this month, with a ninety-five percent on the fifteenth, and we're actually trying to be issuing these documents November twenty-ninth. It's a little bit of an accelerated schedule from, from the last couple that we've done. The market itself is experiencing a little bit of, a little bit of stress due to hail, hail-related events, both in Dallas and the San Antonio area, so we're getting ahead of the, of the summertime crunch for next year, getting the bids out and letting, letting the numbers come in before everyone gets completely booked up for next summer, which will help us out. So bids would be due in January. We're giving them, documents are going out on the night, the twenty-ninth of November, and we're giving them most of the month of January, or all of the month of December and most of the month of January to, to take a look and provide those numbers. Contractors don't like to bid over the Christmas holiday, but to try to meet those timelines, we're giving them extended period to look at, so we hopeful and expectant.
Contractors like to take vacations, though.
Everyone likes to...
Everybody likes holiday.
Not cram the work in over the holiday, but that's plenty of time for them to take a look at it. We discussed it with a number of contractors in the area, and they, they're actually preferably, or they like this schedule because they get to get their numbers in, in January rather than February or March, which is what a lot of school districts are doing with contractors, getting their bids in. Started construction June fifth, right after school lets out, and estimated substantial completion date of August twenty-fifth. Gets us done right, just squeaking it in right before school really gets kicked off. So that's the summary and the buildup.
Great. Anybody have any questions for John? You good? Okay. Phil, how do we pay for it? How do we do it?
Yes, absolutely. We did well. Mr. Cannon did mention we came in ahead of calendar. We also came in ahead of budget, and so we plan to work very hard to do that same thing here.
On time and under budget's always a good thing, isn't it?
Yeah, it's always good, and it's, so anyhow, as we spoke a year ago, we needed to break this project up. That seems to be working well. Project A is completed. We're now looking to go into Project B. We just liked Project A. We are going to recommend that we use competitive seal proposals as a delivery method for, to provide the best value for the district for Project B. And upon a board approval, if you approve this tonight, we plan on prepare requests for competitive seal proposals according to policy, and then the administration will select a committee to review the proposals, return to the board with a recommendation of the rankings, and also like Project A, Hall and Cannon Group will provide the architectural services for this phase of work. Does anyone have any questions about Project B?
Okay, we need a motion to approve the competitive sealed proposals as the delivery method for the Belton High School Roofing Project, Project B, Summer 2017, and authorize superintendent to issue a request for proposals for the project. Select a committee to evaluate and rank the proposals and bring the recommendation ratings back to the board for approval. This is to approve as submitted. Is there a motion? A motion for Mr. Crowthers and a second for Mr. Cannon. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your work on that.
Good job.
Good job, guys. All right, and I'm confident that we will have the same level of success with Project B as we had with Project A, right?
Just me.
Awesome. Okay, issues or concerns for future agenda administrator reports? Amanda, got anything? Mike?
Nothing.
Sue?
Bill?
Jason?